All right, I'm doing the go-ahead calls in March. Board of Commissioners meeting to here. So, thank you for joining us at the NRHA Board of Commissioners meeting. We are broadcasting this meeting live on a virtual platform. For your reference, all information shared today is available online at www.nra.us in the Board of Commissioners section. We will allow for a public comment today, and virtual participants will have the opportunity to raise their hands. I will let you know that particularly in a little bit.
Excuse me, you have to sit in the back.
Yes, sir. We've also been experiencing, like many other public commissions, with the comments that are being made. So, we now have some guidelines for the public comments. To ensure public business is conducted in a dignified, orderly, and efficient fashion during the meeting of the Board of Commissioners, members of the public wishing to address the commissioners, some shall observe the following rules. Public comment will only be heard during the public comments section of the agenda, or if applicable, during a public hearing scheduled to accompany a specific item on the meeting agenda. Comments offered during a scheduled public hearing must be limited to the topic of the specific agenda item for which the hearing has been planned. Members of the public wishing to comment shall introduce themselves by name and address. Speakers shall identify the specific topic upon which they wish to comment. Comments are strictly limited to three minutes. Comments are intended to provide constructive feedback to the commissioners rather than unfocused criticism. Use of profane or threatening speech is not permitted and shall result in removal from the meeting or disallowance of any further comments. Specifically questions that may require additional time or research to answer will be referred to appropriate staff members who will provide a thorough response at a later time. Members of the public wishing to submit additional comments or questions can do so by emailing ngihn@nra.us before or after the meeting. Okay. Yeah, I think we do have an item that we want to do very quickly in the beginning, and I'd like to ask for the recognition of Ms. Pauline Russell.
Okay. Donna and Brenda Fleming, if you all could bring in the family.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning to you.
Good morning.
Well, good morning, aren't you?
Hello.
Hello.
Living the dream.
That's right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How much are you?
Hello.
Hello.
Living the dream.
That's right.
Okay.
Good morning.
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 Hello.
Hello.
Living the dream.
That's right.
Okay.
Good morning.
You know, I'm glad you are able to attend. We wanted to honor Ms. Pauline Russell for her service to our community, all the great things that she's done. So, we wanted to invite you all, and wanted to personally present you all with a recognition of her, and just recognize the great things that she's done throughout the community. Now, I'll go ahead and read it just for the minute. The plaque says, "In Love and Memory of Ms. Pauline Russell. No Time to Cry, Don't Shed a Tear. I Am With God and Spirit, I Am Here. I Kept the Faith, My Spirit is Light, I Am at Peace Now. I Fought the Good Fight. The members of Norfolk Redevelopment Housing Authority in Grandy Village want the families to know our hearts are with you as we gather to bid goodbye to a woman of faith, Ms. Pauline Russell. Pauline Russell professed a hope in Christ in her adulthood. She was a reverent woman of prayer who loved the Lord, a very loyal and faithful person who loved her family and community, including the youth and seniors, with a gentle yet stern combination which only she possessed. She was always available to share encouraging words and was a fighter for those in need of those who were overlooked and disenfranchised. Not only is this a loss of a devoted sister and friend to many, but also a confidant and counselor. Pauline Russell will forever be remembered by NRHA for her big, capital D-I-G, heart, and for most of all, for her dedicated years of exemplary service to her community. Ms. Russell was an active and regular supporter of Bible study classes, gave Bibles to new and existing residents, helped clothing drives, and was very active in the garden project, which involved NRHA's beautification program. We cannot replace Ms. Pauline Russell, but will attempt to demonstrate our love for her. To the family of Ms. Pauline Russell, we know your loss is deep and your sorrow is great, but we want you to know that we share in your sorrow, but more importantly, we recognize that this loss is heaven's gain. Norfolk Redevelopment Housing Authority and the Grandy Village family." Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's do a quick picture of everyone together.
Okay. Yeah, family up front.
Yeah, family up front, please. And Donna and Brenda, can I get you guys a tattoo? Maybe on a bucket on one side? There we go. All right. Everyone say "Pauline" on three. One, two, three. Pauline. Thanks, everyone.
All right.
And we have, I don't know, Brenda, if you wanted to say, have a few words.
If you all don't mind, just give me a quick second. I have been in constant contact with Bernice and Herbert, and I just want you all to know that we are continually praying for the family. Just know that your mother will always, and your auntie will always be in our hearts. All the things that she started within the community, of course, we will continue those things to make sure that the kids are, you know, taking care of the needs are met. So, she left a very important legacy for us to follow, and we will definitely continue to follow that, okay?
Right.
All right. And you need to be free to reach out to me.
All right.
And I'd like to make one statement, too, also, that, you know, it feels like a tree has fallen in our village, the Grandy Village. But I wanted to say that my mother, I was looking at some pictures, and one of the things my mother did was she was very institutionate in having seniors. She did a lot for the seniors there while she was working at the tenant office, community office. And I hope that, you know, you all be all, you know, diligent with your seniors.
Okay. Thank you.
And I really didn't have the opportunity to meet her, but once I read about her, I was really, really taken back by the things that she's done. And I know that we're, we as the agency are going to try to build on the legacy that she already built for us, because we really, our communities will not thrive unless we have people like her working within our communities, selfless devotion that she portrayed throughout her state, you know, at Grandy Village and our other projects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We all, someone older than me will call you, because we've been trying to get out there and bring the grill out, and just feed the kids out there someday. We're talking about them a couple of times, so we're talking about them.
All right. Yeah. We need to back out this door right here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Nice to have that inspiration on such a gritty day. Yeah. Give me a second here. Being technology, five years. We have a number of commissioners who have some medical issues today, and so we are going to have to switch things around quite a bit. So, I'd now like to open it for public comment. Again, with our new guidelines, please make sure that anyone who wants to address says their name and address, as well as the specific topic that they want to talk about. I'll open that up.
This is speaker. We have two here for public comment. The first has been Vincent Hodges, 622 Raleigh Avenue, Norfolk, Virginia, 23507, and Ward 2. Thank you for what you did for this tenant and her family out of Grandy Village. That's who we're all here to advocate for at the end of the day. And so, my problem is that I'm going to go through my sheet real quick and go, "Sense, I'm in cooperation." The gotcha games aren't going to get us anywhere, and we recognize that. So, when we reach out in proper fashion, and coordination is a little bit bumpy, we are trying to control an agenda that allows both of us to talk about things that we might need. We need cooperation on that. We need to be met halfway. When we start going to gotcha games and saying, "This person didn't meet up, and this person didn't meet up," in their good faith, we all get hosed. Our narrative, messages, it's messed up, you're not doing your job, or agitators and kids, "It's ridiculous, reset the narrative, let's reset the narrative before." I'd like to re, so what, right now what? I'd like to repropose that the pitches that we set to Donna Mills, as it is time now, time-relevant, because it was insensitive, that we send it again, be included, and please meet, so we can cooperate, and gotcha games are over. When we first started coming in, in the trio, Sudan and others, Mr. Albert, I forget the elder's name, revered elder's name from Oakleaf that sits here, asked if we could help, and we availed ourselves, or said, "No, because we have our own processes, right? You know, that we have to follow." I told everybody, "Come to my boss." But when Jackie Glass was elected to the HD89, and there was stuff enrichment that needed to be discussed, like kind of like a pipeline stringed up, Mr. Albert called me, asked me for Jackie Glass's number, and he got it. He didn't get any runaround, he didn't get any stiff arm or nothing. Listen, I don't want to sit on your seat. I don't, I swear, I don't want to sit on a city council seat, I don't want to be mayor in 34. I'm a social worker, and I care about black people. I'm an unapologetic black liberation, and I work for black women, and that's all I want. I don't want to make a million dollars, I want to build programs and make our city better. So, please, when I say, "Let's cooperate in good faith," I swear, it's not so I can be in the chest after five women are murdered and tell her, "I swear, I can fix it. I will put people together, I will try to capacity build, I will advocate." So, these tenants go, "You all worked this out, right? It's complicated." I don't want the all up here. All I'm going to do is if somebody says, "I'm hungry, I'm thirsty," or, "I don't have a grocery store," which, again, lastly, because I don't run out of time, we're all running out, we took our eyes off the ball. Save a lot close before George Floyd dies, and we know all of those people are coming back, right? Market hypes up, we should, and I promise I'll email, but we really need to address how we reached out to the NRHA and constituents and talked about the budget. And then there's another thing, that I think the public comment in 16, the 16th, because the rules changed about public comments, sir, I haven't had time to absorb this, or the other stuff that I've been trying to get to and coordinate to the meeting. No more gotcha stuff. I leave my cards again, and if you need me, please come coordinating with me, because we all have to win for them. But just respect anything, okay? Please, 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 give us a chance to absorb the agenda, so we can talk about it together as a collaborative team. I leave my card again, and thank you very much. I'm sorry, I will have my time.
No, no, take care of yourself, buddy.
Yes, sir. I will. I'm supposed to be there, be here and help. This is speaker. We have a second in-person speaker, Ms. Monday Johnson, 3505 Argonne Avenue, Norfolk, and her topic to address is floor reports.
Hi, Ellen.
Hello.
Good morning.
Welcome.
This sweater is not only bad for my hair, but my hair. I just came up to ask, because recently we've had...
Would you mind pulling your mic?
Sorry. No, that's okay. It's just easier to hear.
Yeah. No, but I just came up to ask, because recently we asked Sarah Black, who works with us, to submit a report request in regard to the presentation that was given about Section 18, broad creatures and stuff that we don't completely understand, the residents don't completely understand. And so, when we do that, we sort of ask her to FOIA it, and then explain it to us in language that we understand, and we got that response that now we have to pay like $2,000 to get the information. So, I'm just curious as to how we get the residents this information and break it down to them, if we can't get access to it. If they don't have $2,000, I don't have $2,000, and I'm sure legally it doesn't have just money to spare, our FOIA request, and do such important work for people who don't have $2,000. So, that was something that I was hoping that we could just get some answers on, or how to get the information, because while I don't think it's anything crazy, if this is going to be a question, and it's going to be really difficult to get the information back to the residents, if we have to go every time, so that's kind of my...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to check the lobby. Do you want to go ahead and read the prompt instructions for the online participation?
Yeah, okay. For those on the online, they raise your hand, please click on the raise hand icon on your screen, and you will be called upon. You can also type a comment into the question box on your screen as well. When called upon, please address the virtual room by stating your first and last name, address, and your comment. Again, often times, we get questions, they may not be able to be answered at this time, but we will make arrangements where follow-up with you, with staff members, to address your question.
Mr. Chairman, I'm checking the lobby, and we have no additional, no one additional to present at this time. I've also checked online, and we have no comments or no questions under chat.
All righty. Then we'll go ahead and move on with the agenda. Again, because of the situation that we're facing with a number of commissioners having medical issues, we'll go ahead and move on to remarks from the executive director.
Good morning, guests and commissioners. I just wanted to provide you an update on some items. The first one being COVID-19 and the agency operations, you know how COVID has impacted our organization over the past couple of years. And so, with the recent relaxing of the mask mandates by the CDC, we, as an organization, adopted a mask optional policy, and essentially, and that started this Monday, essentially that means that employees have the option of wearing or not wearing masks indoors at NRHA facilities. Employees who choose not to wear a mask need to be respectful of those who choose to wear masks. Also, until further notice, NRHA's employees will continue to wear masks under these conditions when entering a resident unit or conducting a housing trade transaction, and also if they feel like it's as a preventative measure, if they're within a public space or around others. So, they certainly should feel free to put on a mask. And then the final, most important thing, in no case will a client be refused service solely on the grounds that they, the client, wear a mask. We'll figure out a way to, any kind of service delivery, get information, but that's not a basis to deny service, because they choose not to wear a mask. The second item I'd like to talk about is the staff shortages, which I've updated you on over the past couple of months. We currently have three active requisitions to fill positions, so we're just trying to come up with ways to try to, you know, retain the folks we have, and then bring on other folk, to fill other positions. So, we looked at a couple of things in terms of monetary and non-monetary incentives that we're looking at, and it's, you know, we're in the midst of what they call the great resignation, and, you know, people are transferring jobs and things like that. So, we're just trying to come up with creative ways to be able to attract qualified staff as well as retain the folks that we have. The staff shortages, not COVID as much as it used to be, has had an impact on our service delivery to residents in terms of maintenance and things like that. Last month, we came up with, we prioritized the work orders we received based upon emergency situations, just because of the shortage of staff and our being able to respond. But we have been able to keep up with the lease servicing, the emergency, that we have had opportunities to do the routine maintenance. One of the things that we've done is reached out to outside contractors to help, which we have retained, we have three that we've ordered contracts, and we have one that's pending, so we should have four, and they're basically going to be helping us with unit turns. That's going to relieve a lot of pressure on the staff, so they can devote their time to service and the work orders. So, we're really, and I'd like to thank Kathy Mosley and Robin Buckley for really pushing that through, so we could get contractors to at least help us out, so we can devote more time to addressing not only the emergency, but just routine, because seriously, if you don't address the routine, those are going to become emergencies over time, so we want to make sure we can get to those as well. And finally, I'd just like to talk about the strategic planning process. We're sort of like in the data gathering stage of that process. I'd say we're more than half completed. We're trying to look at different aspects of the organization to be able to present to the board, so they can think about the top five things that we need to concentrate on going forward. Like I said before, we've got a lot of things going on, but you really can't do, with the limit on, you know, resources financially and time, really don't have the opportunity to be able to address everything. So, we need one, the board to weigh in in terms of what are the most important things, top five, I would say, important things going forward for the agency, what's going to be the guiding priorities for the agency going forward. In terms of time, we're looking at the second, I think it's like the second week in May, May the 18th, 19th, or 20th, if you could block out that time.
Good morning.
We're thinking of doing two, thinking of two days, but we just want to give the, make it a three day, just in case. So, there may be one day that some commissioners may not be able to attend, but we would like to be able to get two days, six hours at the most, if we'd like to be able to have a whole of the hearing. And I'll have Joni reach out and the other commissioners that weren't able to attend the day. So, we could try to schedule two days, either the, maybe 18th, 19th, or 20th. But then, actually, like I said, of two days, no more than six hours per day. And then, I know that that was the final thing, but I'd just like to acknowledge, we have a couple of staff members that serve on our executive leadership team that are leading us, probably everyone won't be here for the next board meeting, but I would like to acknowledge them. Jen Moore, who's really been instrumental in helping us through, you know, with the different machinations of the board meetings, to, you know, being virtual, and, you know, she's been sort of a Jacqueline of all trades.
Jackie of all trades.
Jackie of all trades, and really been, and really helped me, you know, with the messaging, especially during COVID, which was really critical, with getting the message out to staff, and also the residents, the, you know, helping get the information out in terms of facilitating where the resources are going to be and things like that, and just being able to craft a message to staff as they encourage through the pandemic. So, I'd really like to thank her service, really appreciate it very much. It serves me and also, well, for the agency. Thank you very much. And I'd also like to acknowledge Sandra Shaw, who's been our project, neighborhood project director. She's inherited some, you know, sort of projects that were, you know, sort of 50/50 sort of, and she really did a masterful job at sort of getting them across the finish line. It's one thing to start a project on your own and carry through, but it's a whole different thing to come in the middle of a project, and you still have to get everything together. And she's done a really masterful job with the, I think it's Grandy, and also with Diggs, to get those, to get those completed, and, you know, have new units available, renovated units for our residents. I'd also like to thank her for the great job that she's done for the agency. Thank you.
So, if there's any other questions, that's it for my conference. Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any comments? We'll move on. Okay. Let's go ahead and do the development one now. Can you give Mr. Carr?
He's available on the phone.
On the phone.
Right. So, today, under development, you'll see on your agenda, you have two public hearings for two different bond issuances. We were planning to also have resolutions for consideration, however, we do not have a quorum today, so we will not move forward with the vote on the resolution. However, the public hearing was advertised, so if there are any comments, online or in person, or someone waiting in the hallway to speak about the two bond issuances, we will accept those comments at this time. By way of introduction, many of you will recall, these are the bond issuances that were considered by the board back in December. We have two different bond issuances. Those are private activity bonds for which the housing authority is acting as a conduit issuer, meaning that the housing authority does not have any ownership interest in these projects, and is also not responsible for the repayment of the bonds. We are simply issuing the bonds to facilitate the project. Participating virtually with us today, we have Stephen Khan from the Standard Community and bond counsel Mike Graff with Maguire Woods, and they are available to answer any questions, if there are any regarding these two bond issuances. Again, today, we are just doing the public hearings, we will not consider the resolutions until next month, in the hope that next month, we can have a quorum present for consideration of the resolution. Mike, I'll turn it over to you, Mike Graff, if you're on the line, and would like to make a few comments.
Certainly.
And Stephen is on the line. We see now Stephen Khan is on the screen. Good morning, Stephen.
Morning. Good morning. Oh, and there I am.
Here is Mike. Good morning.
Thanks, Delphine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Executive Director, Commissioners and staff. So, Delphine, it's really whatever the pleasure of the chair and you about how Stephen and I proceed today, and I'm sorry to hear about the illnesses from the commission members, but as you suggested, Delphine, we could simply take public comment, and then reconvene next month, and update the presentation that Stephen and I made in December, or we're happy to talk further about the projects today, understanding that we won't be able to receive action from the commission until next month on the two items. So, whatever is the pleasure of the chair, and whatever you advise, Delphine, works for us.
Let's see if we have any comments. If Makisha and Jen can check online. Oh, and we have a comment in person. Mr. Hodges, if you would like to come forward with your comments, we have Vincent Hodges. Mike and Stephen, for your benefit, we have Vincent Hodges here in person, who would like to make a comment regarding the bond issuances.
Good morning, again. Vince to two, Vince Hodges, 622 Raleigh Avenue, apartment 4, Norfolk, Virginia, 23507. Mr. Graff, Mr. Khan, is that right? Good morning, thanks for your question. This is a lot to absorb on delay. I'm not, this ain't my thing, and a full-time job, but...
And Khan is on the line. We see now Stephen Khan is on the screen. Good morning, Stephen.
Morning. Good morning.
Okay. Oh, and there I am.
Here is Mike. Good morning.
Thanks, Delphine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Executive Director, Commissioners and staff. So, Delphine, it's really whatever the pleasure of the Chair and you about how Stephen and I proceed today, and I'm sorry to hear about the illnesses from the Commission members, but as you suggested, Delphine, we could simply take public comment and then reconvene next month and update the presentation that Stephen and I made in December, or we're happy to talk further about the projects today, understanding that we won't be able to receive action from the Commission until next month on the two items. So whatever is the pleasure of the Chair and whatever you advise, Delphine, works for us.
Let's see if we have any comments. If Makisha and Jen can check online. Oh, and we have a comment in person. Mr. Hodges, if you would like to come forward with your comments. We have Vincent Hodges. Mike and Stephen, for your benefit, we have Vincent Hodges here in person who would like to make a comment regarding the bond issuances.
Good morning, again. Vince, two-two, Vince Hodges, six-two-two, Raleigh Avenue, apartment four, Norfolk, Virginia, two-three-five-zero-five-seven. Mr. Graff, Mr. Khan, is that right? Good morning. Thanks for your question. This is a lot to absorb on delay. I'm not, this ain't my thing, in a full-time job, but respectfully, and then I'll get out of here. Restates the authority's official intent and set forth in the, right, further on, legal language, nothing else. If we're talking about what is being added to this and everything else, I'd like to propose a little bit of language because of this property being acquired, what we're seeing in the city is a continual social problem that hasn't, as we've seen in the past, been taken into consideration. So these properties are being secured financially through bond life and things like that that we add to, and if I'm talking out of school, this is why I want to shut up, you all can teach me. The official intent, I'd like to add language to the official intent that addresses food apartheid or food desert and medical apartheid or medical desert, and that would be addressed from start, from the moment we're talking about money to acquire this property, all the way to the end. So that way, when we, you know, and I'm not trying to be funny or disparage, but when we build another St. Paul, we make sure that food and food security the entire way until twenty-two hundred for normal citizens, but that there's access to food, parking, medical, so we don't have another situation like the Sableau, because that's going to be a main concern of mine going forward. Again, you've got your stuff, just, I don't know how cities are built, and we please put food there, you know, from the fact.
May I provide a response?
Yeah, and I'll be, sit down and take that.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you, Mr. Hodges, for your comment. And certainly, food deserts and medical deserts are a concern, however, strictly with regard to these matters, the housing authority is not acquiring this property. And the financing in place is really for the renovation of those apartments and to ensure the continued affordability of these apartments moving forward. So this is really a transformation of the housing unit, per se. The financing that is part of these bond issuances is not addressing any other community needs. That's not to say those needs don't exist. I think we're very cognizant of that, however, these resources and these bonds are strictly for the unit. However, if Mr. Khan or Mr. Graff would like to comment any further, I'll give you that opportunity.
I think you said it well, Delphine. Thank you. And Mr. Hodges, appreciate your concerns and interest in the community. We share them, but are very focused on the revitalization of the existing housing, which is our initiative here.
If I may, thanks, because learning is all. Thank you, Mr. Khan. I understand I'm kind of widening, you know, I'm not trying to make mountains out of mobiles to distract or anything else like that. I'm just thinking about, if that's not, you know, I'm not asking for that now that I've understood how Mrs. Darnes has explained it, going forward, bond acquisition, anything like that financially, is there any way we can hook or loop or tie in these kind of conditions are wicked that developers have to hit? Like, again, we weren't developing this prosperity, we're asking for this money, we're not going to approve it as an NRHA if it doesn't address this, or it doesn't have this much money in the bond, you know, in terms of from the jump to be afforded towards, I don't know, biplanes or, you know, again, a grocery store, just anything like that. I know we're securing funding, it's just how we do it. Are we securing funding ethically and making sure that from the jump, from the inception, we keep, again, respectfully, black folks in mind? Thank you for your time. I'll be quiet, and I'll email anything else.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. What do we need to do?
Is there anyone in the hallway? Can we please check to see if someone wants to comment on the bond issuance?
We do it separate.
No, the two, we can do the two together.
Okay.
And then we move on to. There's no one in the hallway, and there are no virtual participants either. Great. Thank you so much. Then that will conclude the public hearing on the two bond issuances. Thank you, Mike and Stephen. Our apologies for not being able to vote on the resolutions today. We'll take that up at next month's meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mike is intervening. And next is.
Kim. Should we start with this idea first? Yes, overview. Yeah.
Yes, we start with item four, and Kim Thomas is here.
We don't need to.
No.
No.
She'll go through it. No.
Usually just five, six.
No, no.
That's at eleven. She's coming. It's at eleven. Unless you wanted to come early just to sit here.
Never mind.
Thank you, Kim. Yes, page thirty-two, and you're active.
I am coming this morning. I can take this off. I can take this off. Coming this morning to just give you an overview of the FY 2023 Annual and Five-Year Plan Process. Today, at eleven o'clock, we will be hosting our public comment, our public hearing period for this plan. This is an usual part of our work here at NRHA. I'm going to go through the slides. These will be the intended slides that will be reviewed as part of the process as well at eleven, but I just want to give the audience that's assembled now an overview as to what will happen and how they will proceed. So just a little bit of background, the Quality Housing and Work Responsibility Act of nineteen ninety-eight requires that public housing communities and public housing authorities complete a five-year annual plan that really includes information on the major goals, objectives, and strategies that the public housing authority and Section Eight program intend to pursue. This includes activities such as demolition and disposition, site-based waiting lists, the requirements and mandates by HUD as they are given to us as a public housing authority, and the way that we're actually going to achieve these goals over the next one to five years. I'd like to acknowledge our Board of Commissioners, those that are assembled today, Mr. Masaccio, Mr. Gresham, and Mr. Alver. The comments that are going to be made today will be addressed to the Board of Commissioners, but we do understand that there will not be a question and response period, however, it is an opportunity for our Board of Commissioners to absorb these comments from the community and to be recognized and put on record, to be included in the actual document itself that's sent to HUD for review and hopefully approval. I'd also like to acknowledge the Resident Advisory Board. The participating members this year are from the communities that are listed, the public housing and mid-rise communities, as well as the Section Eight or Housing Choice voucher program. I do want to clarify how that Resident Advisory Board is assembled. It is automatically asserted that the President of each TMC or Tenant Management Council and Advisory Council is appointed to the Resident Advisory Board because of their leadership and their senior position. There is also an open period where general members of public housing and Section Eight can apply to be appointed to the Resident Advisory Board as well. So in addition to the President of our Resident Council, we also provide an opportunity for residents of the communities who do not serve in a full and executive role in their communities to be a part of this process as well. So this list is the list of folks who represent these communities, either as President or resident from these communities of the program. While we are conducting our public hearing today, as part of this board meeting, we will continue to receive annual plan comments through March eighteenth. That is the length of our forty-five-day required review period. We are going from February first to March eighteenth. There is a dedicated phone line that is set up, seven-five-seven-three-one-four-thirteen-twenty, that will allow folks to leave a message. Again, if this is a situation where the comment is made in terms of the public comment period for the annual plan, the comment is included in the annual plan draft that goes to HUD and an official response will be appearing in the plan as well as the final draft. If there are comments that are left, and we've gotten lots, are due to more personal things or things that are particular to a household or situation, then we do have the appropriate staff member respond in time. So we don't wait, we're not waiting to the end of the public comment period. Those things that are being addressed, like maintenance issues, et cetera, are actually filtered to the appropriate staff person for immediate response. And again, the hotline is open until March eighteenth at the close of fifth. Just a quick schedule review. We have been conducting our Resident Advisory Board meetings since January fifth. About every other week, we assemble a group virtually to meet. Those meetings are recorded, so for those Advisory Board members who are not able to make it in that synchronous time, we provide that recording to them so that they can review and even offer comments as they see fit. The forty-five-day public review period, again, is February first through March eighteenth, twenty twenty. Today, we are facilitating the need for the public hearing as associated with the annual plan. The RAB Board, or Resident Advisory Board, will make their final recommendation to the annual plan on March thirtieth, and the final draft of the plan will be made available online at nraha.us on April seventh. So this will be something that can be reviewed ahead of the April fourteenth board meeting. The Board of Commissioners will, once again, see me do a presentation on April fourteenth, ask me for a resolution to approve the plan, and if approved, then the annual and five-year plan will be submitted to HUD on April fifteenth. The approved plan from HUD is effective as of July first through, excuse me, July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. That is our operating year. Just a few things to call out. Again, the annual plan is effective, is approved July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The plan takes a look at our overall goals as we determine the work to be done moving forward. And again, the plan itself is a look forward, the things that we aspire to do. It doesn't mean that the funding is in place right now, it doesn't mean that we have the plan worked out. It is a document that really talks about the aspiration of this public housing program. We do address things like the administrative plan and admissions and continued occupancy, updates and changes, those are any things that affect our Section Eight and low-income public housing programs, things like the Virginia Residential Landlord Tenants Act aspect, fair housing aspect, and then those nuances here in-house that determine eligibility for these housing programs. We also will provide an update on Section Three and economic inclusion activities. In November of twenty twenty-one, HUD came out with a final rule about Section Three, so we have now included that in the plan as well. We will also have a review of the capital fund updates. Capital fund is the money that is received from HUD that allows us to address maintenance and engineering architectural issues in our public housing communities, and also program For today's Board of Events, again, the Board of Commissioners will hear public comments, but reaction comments and dialogue will only occur if the board feels that a public comment is erroneously false, misleading, or otherwise harmful to today's proceedings or the mission of the agency. All comments received, either in person today or on the recorded line, will be transcribed and included in the final draft of the plan that will be submitted to HUD as required with the applicable responses as it relates to the annual and five-year plan only. So again, if we receive the comments that are related more so to personal or in-house issues of a particular resident or citizen, the response may be it does not relate to the annual plan, because we don't want to provide a public quorum to discuss folks' personal issues. In today's public hearing, we're going to ask folks to clearly speak their first and last name, the address, and the comments with a maximum of three minutes, and I will actually defer to the Board of Commissioners Chair for any additional comments pertaining to the quorum in order today. Thank you.
Any questions, comments, again?
Not related to the plan, but Kim, are you still participating with the Economic Inclusion Committee or Team City in that group?
We still participate. We actually have two groups that participate now, one in relation to the CNI work that's being done, and then overall, the larger group that really set up the work that led to the ordinance for the City of Norfolk, as well as economic inclusion plans for both the City of Norfolk and here at NRHA, kind of backed off of that one a little bit, took more focus on the CNI plan. But my hope is that our internal group, our internal sub-group actually is revised a bit more so that we can talk more in depth. And in the vein of the economic inclusion information, I would like to just announce as well that we did have Linda Davenport, who was our Economic Inclusions Manager, retire at the end of February, and we have hired a new manager, Anna Paris, who is now on board with us, and hopefully we'll be meeting him in person very soon.
You still.
I'm still involved. Good, better, and different, I'm still involved.
All right. Thank you, Kim.
All right, thank you.
That's the one I called.
Yes, we have advertised at four-eleven, so unfortunately, we may have a really long break in between, but because it was advertised publicly at eleven o'clock, we have to wait until.
You've got a lot of cool things.
You do the.
No, we can't.
No, no, we can't.
We're going to go to number six.
Okay. Page forty-three, in your packet. Want to scroll through those and see if there are any comments? And the unit turnover.
Yeah, there's a wide range of bids on the unit turnover. Are we comfortable with those numbers?
Yes, Kathy's vetted them out, and they're going to be based upon a task order, so we just try to make sure that they're, even the prices are reasonable.
If you swallow a rotten fish, you get sick.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, like you say, it looks like the.
Yeah.
Game's a three.
The fourth one is way higher.
Yeah, I think that's one that we didn't. Yeah, that's one we didn't. And there's one on there that's, one that's not on there, I think, that we got in that's unreasonable. But we have a process to make sure that they're, you know, the cost of this within reason.
Okay. All right, go on.
Nope.
Do we have any new business? Other than be prepared for St. Patrick's Day.
So you're in green already?
Well, see, I'm Mediterranean Irish. That means the O is on the other end of my hand. That was a joke.
I'm dressed in my pro-Ukrainian.
Committee notes. They say we're giving pretty good counting of the ones I'm at, so. All right, if there are new comments. We don't have a closed session today.
None today, sir.
Not today. Not today, then we can look at the updates, starting on page ninety. Which gives us family first update, communications and government relations, as well as Tidewater Gardens relocation efforts as of February twenty-eighth. Take a moment or two to take a look at that. We did have a bunch of pictures up there for a while. Family first. Unity Day. Rodney, you want to talk about that unity that you were being there with?
Yeah, I know, well, and that was for the basketball thing. And Kim was there a little longer. I know she talked about it the last time, but if you want to talk a little bit more about that and also...
Is anything coming out of that?
Well, yeah, we, yeah, I know we're, we had, Kim and I attended meetings on the Nighthawk. This was sort of like, almost like a precursor to starting that league up. And we had had meetings on just getting the budgets. Make sure we had the right, the amount, the sufficient amount of resources to fund that, which the bulk of it is going to come from the city. But the unity event was sort of like a precursor to the Nighthawks. And Kim, if you wanted to add some more?
Sure, the unity event really served as an opportunity to, as Mr. Jackson said, served as a precursor for the Norfolk Nighthawk event, which will be a sixteen-week basketball and enrichment activity that's sponsored by the City of Norfolk. We are a partnering agency, providing space and, in many cases, outreach for the event itself. But this particular event was a event hosted by Reckly, which is a local nonprofit. The young man that runs the program or that organization, Anthony Clary, is a former resident of Young Paris. He operates a gym, a training facility out of military circle. And in his attempt to really give back to the community, he has been engaging mostly young men in our community and Young and Calvert to get them out of their known environment into this facility and to actually work together just in the name of basketball, but understanding how important camaraderie and respect is between these two communities that have had so much tension between them. So the event really was far more successful than I think most folks thought it would be. It went out without a hitch. These kids love the fact that they were back in their community doing something they love for the first time in two years. And this will be pretty much an opportunity for us to continue to work with this organization to build more, more activities that really is saying, we all live here in this city, in this area together. Let's figure out ways to prove to everybody that not only do we respect our community, we respect ourselves enough not to bring negativity and violence into the community. So what we've heard more of than anything else since the February twentieth event is when can we get the gym open on a regular basis? So those are some of the things that we're trying to incorporate resources and opportunities into our budget and our projected operations in the next fiscal year to do more of that. But it was really a great event. Even one of the toughest young men in Young walked into the rec center and literally cheered up. He said, "I can't believe I'm actually sending in my gym for the first time in two years." So it was fantastic, especially considering the things that have happened in Young in the last few months.
It was, it was well-attended, it was really well-organized. And, I mean, just on a personal note, I know that even with my time in public housing, if I didn't have that outlet, because I had an adult in the community take me to start playing football at the, around the rec center area. And if I didn't have that, there is no, I mean, with all the other opportunities to get in the kind of mischief and things like that. So having a rec center, organized sports, those things are vital because if you don't have those opportunities, then there's, you know, there's, unfortunately, there's peer pressure and things for, to get involved in other things. So it was, I mean, we definitely will support anything related to having those type of constructive activities.
And part of the concern was that it would just be a one-off.
Yeah, and, you know, and then...
In a way. So I'm glad to hear that things are moving forward to keep it moving.
I think the, having the family and Colleen and what she's doing in the community.
Yeah, that was...
And the opportunity to do these things, as you're saying, from a personal standpoint, they are critical to building a healthy community. And, you know, you can build all the buildings in the world. And if there's despair.
Right.
If there's lossness.
Yeah.
Then you've got a real, real problem. You've got to stop that. And where you stop it with kids. I think I'm right about this one. You give them positive, healthy things to do.
Yeah, and the thing is, it's not just the basketball in itself, but it's, you have the opportunity to talk about life skill. That's a really important part. So you're not, you know, hey, if you want to get into the NBA, no, it's not, that's not what it's there, there for. You know, it's to get them there, and then you have the opportunity to talk about other things. Basketball is an important part of it, but then you have a captured audience and you can talk about, hey, life is not just about basketball. You know, there's other opportunities, and that sets the stage for, you know, if they start thinking about, you know, college, maybe, you know, they start talking about, well, very few guys make it to the NBA, let alone getting, you know, to college and things like that. What are you, what are you planning on doing for the rest of your life? What's your, what's your short-term goals, what's your long-term goals? And so even in that kind of setting, you have the opportunity to have those kind of conversations that are really helpful for these youth going forward.
Great, thanks, Kim, really appreciate it. Good work. All right, how do we do the GAAP?
We don't have to... We can just adjourn.
We adjourn.
Well, there's one thing, I don't, Commissioner Albert, I don't know if you were here when I was talking about the dates for the strategic plan.
Who was...
The...
Before we adjourn, I was just asking you a question for that...
We've got the historic district stuff in there. Is that something we should do after later? The downtown Norfolk commercial historic, well, it really comes down to RR and...
Is it just in the update?
Yeah, I think it's just, is that an update?
Yeah, I guess.
It's not in the update. There's no action item.
Okay.
And I was just, I was just mentioning, I don't think Commissioner Albert was here when I was talking about the dates that we wanted to sort of block off for the strategic plan. It was the eighteenth through the twentieth. And I was going, Joni was going to reach out to the Commissioners. And we try to get, we're going to try to get two dates, no more than six hours per day so we can have the strategic plan retrieved.
All right, with that, I will go ahead and adjourn. Thank you so much. And we'll, the public hearing is at eleven, so... I have an A1. You know that. All right, I'll go ahead and call the NRHA Annual Plan Public Hearing to order. Thanks, everyone. We'll have a presentation from Mr. Kim Thomas here shortly, but I wanted to make some comments about the guidelines for public comment. To ensure public business is conducted in a dignified, orderly, and efficient fashion during the meeting of the Board of Commissioners, members of the public wishing to address the Commissioners shall observe the following rules. Public comment will only be heard during the public comment session in the public hearing about the annual plan. Comments offered during a public hearing must be limited to the topic of the specific agenda items for which the hearing has been planned, and in this case, it is the NRHA annual plan. Members of the public wishing to comment shall introduce themselves by name and address. Speakers shall identify the specific topic on which they wish to comment. Comments are strictly limited to three minutes. We hope that the comments are, will provide constructive feedback to the Commissioners rather than an unfocused criticism. Use of profane or threatening speech is not permitted. May result in removal from the meeting or disallowance of any further comment. Specific questions that may require additional time and or research to answer will be referred to appropriate staff members who provide a thorough response at a later time. Members of the public will have an additional way to put comments on the annual plan, and Ms. Thomas will go over that. So Ms. Thomas, if you'll come up.
Good morning again, Commissioners. We will review the annual plan process before we begin to take the public comment. And I just wanted to make sure that everyone is fully aware of not only, not only the purpose of today's meeting, but the protocol that we will follow in collecting these comments. A little bit of background, the Quality Housing Work Responsibility Act of nineteen ninety-eight requires public housing authorities to complete a five-year and annual plan that is submitted to HUD. The plan includes information on the agency's major goals, objectives, and strategies for public housing in Section 8 or ACB programs, such as demolition and disposition activities, site-based waiting lists, and requirements and mandates by HUD, and our overall objectives and strategies for achieving our mission. I'd like to acknowledge, before we begin the process, our Board of Commissioners in person today, we have Mr. Mr. Saccio, Vice Chair Albert, and Mr. Gresham. I'd also like to acknowledge the participating resident advisory board members who have been a part of this process or this cycle. On the screen are the communities that have had active members participate in this process. The Resident Advisory Board, or RAB, is comprised of the tenant management and resident council president, or they're designated, as well as community residents who have applied to be a part of this board. We have, we have had meetings being held since January, and these are the members, members who come from these communities have been the active members in this process. As mentioned earlier, we will continue to receive public comments for this annual plan period through March 18th. While we are conducting our virtual meeting today to receive comments, we will continue to allow comments to come in via a dedicated telephone line. That number is seven five seven three one four one three two zero. And this line will remain open through March 18th to receive comments. Again, the comments need to be in reference to the annual and five-year plan. Comments related to individual or singular issues dealt in specific households or communities will be redirected to the appropriate staff for response. Just a quick overview of the schedule of this process. Again, the resident advisory board meeting began January 5th and will conclude on March 30th, which includes a session that will allow the resident advisory board meeting to make their recommendation. We are now in the forty-five day HUD required public comment period, which goes from February 1st to March 18th. We are facilitating the need for the public hearing today. And the final draft of the completed plan will be available online at nrhaj.us for review on April 7th. The Board of Commissioners will receive a final resolution presentation from me on April 14th. If that resolution is approved, then the submission of the annual and five-year plan will be made to HUD electronically on April 15th. And if that plan is approved by HUD, the effective date for the new plan will be July 1st through, July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, our regular program year. The annual plan, again, will be effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. It will provide, provide updates and overall plan goals by department and section. We anticipate, including information about anticipated development activity through June 2025 as part of the five-year plan and demolition and disposition activities. It's important to note that the annual plan is a plan of aspiration, which basically means it includes both information about projects and services and goals we are likely to achieve, as well as things that we have on the horizon and the future that we would actually like to accomplish as well. Although funding and specific details may not be laid out, these are things that we want to put in advance to allow our constituents and our residents to know what we are working on over the next five years. The plan will also demonstrate any changes or updates to the administrative plan and the admissions and continued occupancy plan. These are the aspects of public, low-income public housing and the housing choices out there, programs that accounts for any changes to occupancy eligibility or continued eligibility. It also includes information about demolition and disposition preferences for tenants who are part of communities that are slated to be demolished and/or transitioned to other, to other phases. And it also includes updates related to the Virginia Residential Landlord Tenant Act as they apply. We'll also provide updated language on Section 3 and economic inclusion activities. In November 2021, HUD produced a final rule as related to Section 3, so that will also be included in the most updated plan version on April 7th. We'll also have information on the capital fund update, which is the money used for maintaining our public housing stock. And we'll also include general program updates. Again, a final draft will be made available online on April 7th. Just to review the order of events for today's hearing, the board is assembled to hear public comments. Reactions, comments, and dialogue will only occur if the board feels that a public comment is erroneously false, misleading, or otherwise harmful to today's proceedings or the mission of the agency. All comments will be transcribed and included in the final draft of the plan that will be submitted to HUD as required with applicable responses as it relates to the annual and five-year plan only. What that basically means is that if someone asks a question or has a comment that does not relate directly to the five-year and annual plan, it will be recorded, however, it will be answered separately by members of staff and as according, according to the situation and the nature of the question. Lastly, all speakers will be asked to give their first and last name to clearly speak their address and to be knowledgeable that the comment period will be a max of three minutes. And we also ask that you abide yourselves to the rules outlined by the Board Chair regarding order and decorum for today's public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. On that, I will open the door for comments. Do we have comments?
No comments, we're going to check the lobby. Perhaps reading the prompt instructions one more time may help folks to engage.
Does it require me to read the comments? I will now commence the public comment portion of the agenda. Virtual participants, if you would like to state your comment, please click on the raised hand icon on your screen, and you will be called upon. You can also type a comment into the question box on your screen as well. When called upon, please address the virtual room by stating your first and last name, address, and your comment. Please note that questions asked this time may not be responded to, but instead, we will make arrangements to follow up with... we will make arrangements to follow up with you to address your question.
We have no speakers in the hallway. Would you like to speak? We have one raised hand. We've got Miss Bantoria Clay on the line. Miss Clay, your line is unmuted. Please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Bantoria Clay with Independence Center, located at sixty-three-hundred East Virginia Beach Boulevard, Norfolk two-three-five-zero-two.
All right, please make your comment.
Okay, I have a few comments I'd like to make, and, and first, we'd like to say that we appreciate the, the strategies that are included in the plan to expand on affordable housing opportunities and increase the number of special purpose vouchers. We would like to say that as NRHA replaces the, the redeveloped assisted units, one-for-one, that, that there won't be a loss of accessible units. So as, as you replace those one, those redeveloped units, one, one-for-one, we would ask that there would be no loss of accessible units. Our next comment is, as you outreach to those landlords to increase participation, Section Eight of participation among the low-poverty areas, to also include those landlords with newer accessible units. And, and as you conduct those marketing to landlords, we ask that Norfolk Housing also include awareness and information on the amendment to the Virginia Fair Housing Law, that on the basis of source of funds or income. So we would like, you know, more information on that protection as it includes persons who are using Section Eight vouchers. Now, in the way of, as you provide new construction with redeveloped housing, whether it's for sale or for rental, we ask that, that universal design features are included, because these features would, some of these features would also include five-feet turning diameter space in the kitchen and bathrooms, and also curbless showers. And, and we also ask that for the new and redeveloped housing units to include more than, or to provide more than the minimum five percent of five oh four accessible units for people with mobility disabilities. So that's the end of my comments.
Thank you very much. Ms. Moore, do we have anyone else?
At this time, we have no additional comments raised, and we have no questions.
All right. I will then go ahead.
I'll take the hallway one more time.
Oh, yeah, we better do that, yeah.
No one in the hallway.
All right. We'll then call the public hearing to a close. Thank you very much. Just one thing separate in the parts where the board members in your packet, it shows our next meeting says it's April tenth. It's really April fourteenth. It was a typo. Well, see, they, it's supposed to be one for one.